I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm John Flynn, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Christie could not be here this evening. I can see that all of -- we don't take attendance, but all the council is here, so that's very good. First item of new business is a resolution ordering the raisin removal of dilapidated unsafe structure owned by Janice Strong Smith at Suits Us Drive.
Yes, Mr. Flynn asked me to speak, and what I say really applies procedurally to the next, to the three items that you have. These are, in your packet, you can look at the photographs, are properties that have been deemed to be unsafe, dilapidated, in violation of code. And you can tell from the picture of sort of their stated condition. I don't know how many of you were on the council last time we did this. It's been a year or two since we've done one, believe it or not. But the, there is a legal process when you have an unsafe dilapidated structure like this where the owners are provided legal notice that of a violation. If it's not remedied, they're given notice that they're going to come before the city council. There is a public hearing conducted by the city council regarding the property, and then the city council makes a determination as to whether or not it should be ordered that they raise and remove, in other words, tear down and clear off these lots. After, if, assuming you adopt that ordinance, or that resolution, rather, they are given 30 days in which to do that, the owners are. They are also provided additional notice of that the passage of the resolution, another round of notice. And then if they do not do that within the 30 day period, the city has the authority to go in, do the work, clear it off, make it safe, do whatever it is you have ordered, which is going to be to raise and remove it. And at that point, that obviously costs the taxpayers money. Then there's a process by which that figure is brought back to the council for certification as a lien, and those amounts are certified to the county tax collector for collection with the next year's real estate taxes if they're not paid. And that's, that's the way we go back collecting that. So on each one of these three, there will be three separate public hearings. They are neighboring structures, but they do, it's important they be considered each of their own merit regarding this. It's not kind of a group thing. They each have separate owners. They, they have a common history and some common ownership, but they're, they're to be considered individually and separately. The first one is owned by Ms. Smith and is 9384 Suits Us Drive. I believe in your packet, I know I got off of the county tax assessor's website, the most recent photographs that they showed, record, and then the, the valuation information they have. I believe you'll notice that they value the improvements on that property as worth zero. So that's status. This has been, some of these properties have been going up for quite a while. Doug may want to address this one first. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to this one. Like I said, there will be a full public hearing, in which case you can get more information.
This particular property, we haven't had contact with the owner. You can see that we've known about over the years. This one dates back several years, several certified mailers to the tax assessor record of ownership, and no response. The next two on the agenda, we have had some response with, but this one is poor condition, is a hazard to the community, it's unsafe, appears abandoned. We have heard from a couple of the owners expressing interest in removing parts of the cabin. You'll see on the next two, I think that would be unsafe for people to enter these and try to remove them board by board, so take that into consideration when we talk about each one of these. This first one probably, if you had to rank the three, this one probably in a little better condition than the second two, but they're all three in pretty bad condition. Any questions?
I wanted to add one thing as it relates to the, to the second one, which is 9386. You'll notice it's owned by Richard McKinney at All. We have, the city has retained the services of an attorney ad litem which state law requires us to do whenever you have unknown or non-resident owners. And so we had a full title search conducted on this property. The last deed of record, which was a redemption deed from the state, indicated Richard P. McKinney at All. This has been passed and been in the family for decades, and so they're probably, this the at All, the others, and others is what that means in Latin, are probably brothers and sisters. It could be children or brothers and sisters. They're unknown to us, and so we have retained the services of an attorney named Saul Kim to serve as an attorney ad litem to attempt to provide notice and to represent the interest of unknown owners. He has been doing that in this particular case. Also, one of the owners that we are aware of is out of the country even, and so being a non-resident, he, he stands in that stead as well. So we have had to already incur some expense related to this, related to that.
We did include in the packet a memo from my predecessor from 2015 of quite a few details that show some dates even prior to 2015, in which they tried to get some of these structures brought back up to code without success.
There is, the mayor indicated to us, I don't think I'm saying anything incorrect here, there, there had been a series of discussions over a very lengthy period of time with, particularly the McKinneys, about potentially them trying to do something. The city just, we did, we were, we just did everything we could to, to try to be as accommodating as possible and giving them time. They never came through and did anything really other than they hired an engineer to draw up some plans that would potentially shore up this second property, 9390, just so someone could actually enter it without it being a risk. But from best we can tell, no actual work was ever done. Some permits may have been issued, but no work was ever done. And we reached, of course, we, we had some turnover in the office and the other stump dumps and other things we've had to deal with around here. But the mayor's deployed, where he said, "We've, we've worked and accommodated as much as possible, time to proceed." And so as we have this public hearing, it's very possible one or more of the owners may show up. It's not uncommon for them to say, "Oh, if I just had some more time, I could do whatever." It is up to you as to whether you want to adopt this or not, or grant more time. Of course, the mayor's not here, but he has expressed to us, he's ready to move on.
Jason, would you walk us through the process, and if we do approve these resolutions, what are the next steps?
You, you approve that resolution, then, then the owners receive notice of that, and they're, by terms of the resolution, given 30 days in which to raise and remove the property. If, if they raise and remove it within 30 days, it's over. If they do not raise and remove it within 30 days, then at that point, the law allows the city to take whatever action is necessary to bring it into compliance. So at that point, then the city is going to be procuring demolition services. That would take a period of time for us to, to, to find a company who would demolish the buildings, clear the lots, dispose of the remnants in their, in their appropriate place, and then pay that bill. And then once we get that done, and that bill is paid by the city, then it comes back to the council for certification of that amount. And then if the council approves and certifies that amount, then the tax collector is, receives a notice of that. They would add it to the next year's property tax bill and try, attempt to collect it through the, through the property tax process. That's the process.
So when do you say the public hearing is?
When is it? It's, it's during the council meeting, so.
Next Monday.
So what would happen is the first item of new business would be this issue, then the mayor would open a public hearing as to that one property. Hear the public, close the public hearing, then you all would consider the resolution. Do it again? Do it again.
And so each of these owners has received notification of the public hearing being Monday.
Posted on the property, it's been mailed and delivered to them, according to law.
And the hook is, when you put the lien on the property, the next person who buys it has to pay the taxes of the lien, so your $50 lot goes up to whatever taxes are plus the deposit they're managing.
These, these are, the Suits Us Drive properties, each of these are located in what's considered Old Bell Vista. These are, you know, we just did the new Suits Us up the hill. Suits Us actually goes over to the right up the gravel and back up the hill, and then it becomes Cedar Crest as you go forward and continue on to that stop sign. Right? So once you go up and go up the hill there, they're up there, that's where they are.
They're only up to rest there.
They are, they were at least 90 years ago cabins where people would come for the summertime, and then Lake Bell Vista was, there's a highway there now, but there was some sort of road there, and it's across there, and it was part of the original Bell Vista site.
Didn't, I don't know if it was the second property that the gentleman was in to speak to council like two years ago, or was it a different property down the street that we burned down?
This was a different property. We had a gentleman come, and I don't remember his name, and he sought a delay because he had supposedly HDTV was going to come in and do some, something, which was all, did not pan out. He came, but I do not believe the McKinneys have, this has never gotten to this point to the council before.
Right, okay.
That was a different one.
No, that was a different property.
Same neighborhood, different.
Yeah, I could even speak to the neighborhood.
Yeah, on the way before those, yeah.
So the first one is 9384, second resolution is 9386, again, whole separate packet of information on that. Third one is 9390, again, different set of owners, whole different set of packet of information, just consider them independent of each other.
Thank you very much, both of you, for the explanation. I think we'll skip ahead to D, which is expressing the willingness of the city of Bell Vista to utilize federal aid transportation alternatives program funds to assist with the construction of the Mercy Way corridor improvements. And we may tie this in with the discussion of Mercy Road Bridge update. Doug, would you like to?
Sure. Derek's going to give you an update. He's been talking closely with ARDOT and our local representatives, and so in conjunction with Mercy Road Bridge update, he's going to explain Resolution D, asking permission to apply for these TAP funds to assist in that.
Thanks, Doug. This resolution is an opportunity for council in short to affirm your support in receiving additional assistance through application of additional federal funds for the construction phase of the project. So much of the council can recall back to 2015. This Resolution 201548 is in your packet. This is when the council first pledged its support for participation in a federal grant, grant funding to support improvements to the Mercy Way corridor in Bell Vista. As you know, this is the Mercy Way Bridge. The western terminus of this project would be US 71 on the west side, and then on the east side going over to Dartmoor and Lambeth intersection. Would also include a kind of linchpin connection for the Greenway to continue further north from the south into, into Bell Vista. The improvements with this project, as we currently are in agreement with ARDOT, are to add travel lanes to accommodate additional vehicular traffic, as well as bike and pedestrian lanes to accommodate this section of the Greenway. In 2015, the city received a generous award in which the federal funds are currently covering 80% of the project's overall cost, with the city responsible for a minimum of 20%. With the council's recent consideration of, of construction estimates with Mayor Christie, the mayor offered to seek additional funding sources to help offset the city's portion of construction cost. So with this resolution, this refers specifically to the TAP program, which stands for Transportation Alternative Program. This, this unique funding source is for non-motorized portions of the project. So the way that you can kind of illustrate this assisting the, the project is, it's only to be applied to the construction phase and only to the non-motorized portion. So you can think of it as going towards sidewalk sections, crosswalks, ADA ramps, as well as the Greenway extending into this, this area. If the city were successful in receiving that application, it's good for maximum, it, it also requires a 20% match. It's good for up to a max of $500,000. And kind of the way that could work in concert with the existing setup, the existing support that we have from the federal program, is that if the city were to receive, say, the max of, of $500,000, that would be applied to, again, those non-motorized portions in order for us to still provide our, our minimum of 20% to the existing contract, that non-motorized portion would kind of be set aside with the TAP assisting it over here, and then us still providing our 80-20 match as we agreed to with the, the 2015 agreement. So it kind of allows us to, in a way, separate those out and, and if we're successful to, to receive this, this TAP assistance for that, those non-motorized portions.
But to even apply a requirement on the application, does city council approve of the support?
That's right. So this is, your support of a resolution is required as a prerequisite to, to apply for this, for this grant.
Head Larry.
A question for you. What kind of dollars of the total project are we talking about for this non-motorized components? Have you separated those outs and we have our arms around it?
Sure.
Is it 500,000 out of the 5 million?
So the freeway and the pedestrian portion of the project are about 1.4 million dollars. The remainder of the bridge is four lanes of traffic, and then right-of-way acquisition and design, design is a big portion of the project.
So if, if the project right now has got an umbrella on it of about 5 million, I understand our share is about 1, the 80-20. So of the 5 million, about 1.4 is the, is the bike and non-motorized components of this. And so do we get, do we get 80-20 from the federal fund on this part of the project too, currently?
If, if the TAP application were successful, then you can imagine the 80-20 with a maximum of up to 500,000 being applied to the 1.4 that, that Doug just, that Doug just mentioned, okay? And then that 1.4 would be subtracted out of the five, such that we would then take that, that remainder in and still be responsible for just a less, still be responsible for 20%, but that lesser amount. Five minus the 1.4.
So we don't get 80-20 from the feds on the whole project, we only get it on the street project if we get the TAP grant?
Correct. Some of it is only for construction, the 80-20, and the right-of-way and some portions of the project.
So I guess my, what I was thinking is if we get 80-20 on the whole project from the feds, and then we have a million point four out here that we're going to get some additional funding on, we got 80-20 there, so that's, that's really a nice windfall. But I don't think that's what you're saying in words.
So really, the question he's asking is the same one I had. Does this second TAP grant less than our 20%? Do we pay less, let's say it is 5 million. Right now it's 5 million, we're paying a million. So do we pay less than a million if we got that?
It's going to lessen our portion, but keep in mind, that 5 million came about in 2015.
Yes, I was just using it as an example, sure.
Design costs have gone up, construction costs go up, steel has skyrocketed.
Yeah.
So although we've been in touch with the engineers every week, we've been in the process with them next week to try to get some more concrete numbers on how much they anticipate this rising by the time.
Yeah. Does this new grant lower our total obligation?
It doesn't lower the, the 20% commitment still, the city still has to provide the 20% minimum as was agreed to in 2015.
Yeah.
Regardless of this, this TAP. If we were to receive the TAP, though, in theory, that what that 20% is coming out of, it has, it can be a lower amount.
But it seems to me that the numbers don't jive, because if you take the 1.4 million, but the maximum TAP grant is 500,000, there's 900 grand floating around, so 20% of the total would still be more than 20% of, say, 3.6, using old numbers, plus the extra you'd have to pay on the 1.4 because the TAP grants only 500,000. So I don't think those numbers, unless I'm figuring something wrong, work out.
But is the 5, the 500 grand max, I thought maybe it was referring to our share, our 20% share.
No, it's the grant share.
That's the grant.
So there's, so there's 900 grand floating in midair somewhere, the way I hear it.
You're correct that there would still be 900 floating there, but what we would, instead of adding that to the, the 20% of not receiving any sort of TAP assistance for non-motorized, which is what that 900 is coming from, our, our new 20% coming from the general first agreement is now coming from a lower.
But it's not going down by anywhere near 900,000. Because if we are paying 20% of 5 million, using old numbers, that's 1 million. If we're paying 20, paying 20% of 3.6, that's still 720,000, and then you have to add back in 400,000 dollars shortfall potentially, no, 900,000 shortfall, which puts us higher than paying 20% of a whole shebang.
We're not going to be held responsible for more than 20% of the deal.
Doug, is it not just an additional, potentially an additional half million toward the existing project?
It is.
And, and so whatever the city's stake is right now, it's going to be reduced by half a million dollars, right?
That's our understanding. It's a complicated.
It's 80-20 of this, and 80, and then we've got this portion now, it's 80 and 20 of that, but still it's 80-20.
I can give you a spreadsheet next week, after we meet with the engineers, it's not going to come over, a complete breakdown of what we owe on each grant, should we get the max.
Okay.
So 5 million, 80-20, right? And you're going to separate 1.4 million out from that. You're still going to get 80-20 on that 1.4 million, right?
No, because there's a maximum of 500,000.
Well, it's not, it's not a cut and dry, 80-20 on 5 million. I mean, it's two, two different. Amounts approved, y'all just, y'all approve, amounts for design, amounts for right-of-way, amounts for construction. Portions of the 80-20 only apply to construction, so you can't just take it as a total and then chop off 20%.
With the existing, the, the 80-20 does apply to all, all three of those phases, but with the, with the TAP, that would just apply to the construction phase for non-motorized.
So that'd be good if you could give us a spreadsheet next week.
We can do that.
I don't think you guys would consider a grant that was going to make us pay, where we would agree to pay more in the long run.
We're fine to receive 500,000.
Right. It would assist the overall project.
We're not going to pay more, period. We're going to gain whatever the grant is, less 20%.
And what they're saying is the project may cost more because it's been four years since those estimates.
Yeah.
That's the increase.
Could we use this as an opportunity?
That's there whether this is, this grant is available.
Could we use this as an opportunity to reframe total cost, what our commitment is so far, what are we committed to, what, what do we think? Best guess, estimates today, what we think the project is going to cost today.
We can certainly be do that, and keep in mind that these engineers, as they're giving us estimates, they're trying to get estimates in the future, not knowing what is going to happen to construction materials and steel.
Right, sure.
When we start construction in 2021 is.
Fair enough.
And that's a tall, it's a tough estimate.
Fair enough, but if our last numbers were three years ago, there's an opportunity to refresh those numbers more accurately today.
Nice to know how the package holds up with this TAP grant in there, and see what our position is based on what we, what the engineers feel the cost is today.
Can you tell me what the application date is and what the decision date is?
The application due date is the 3rd of June, and it's later in the summer that results are provided.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That's why we had to hurry it and be on this.
Yeah.
We just went to the, we just went to the training on explanations two weeks ago.
Well, thanks for getting that so quickly. So is there anything else to be said about Mercy Road update, Mercy Road Bridge update?
It's in the 50% design phase right now, and they have identified right-of-way owners, and probably since we meet, the next week, they're going to start that process of maybe reaching out to some of them. They sent us, they sent us some updated drawings, trying to reduce the setbacks on the drugstore there at the corner, to try to eliminate, removing some of their parking spots. The, the original right-of-way setbacks were eating into their parking lot a little, so we're trying to connect that, so they're, they're working on some.
They never use them all, shouldn't be a problem.
It's a cold problem.
They may not agree with that.
We can fix it forward. It'd be cheaper to, to not have to dig into that.
Sure.
Okay.
One more on that.
Yeah, good. One more question, Doug. So we talked a little bit, and the last time we had a discussion around this, about the design for the bridge included a cycling lane on one side and a pedestrian path on the other. And we had some conversation around the necessity for that. Any, any updates on that?
We did get numbers from the engineer on that. They broke down the cost on both the pedestrian lane and the bike lane, and then we, we asked them to just pull the pedestrian walking lane off completely, and it was a, how much was that, 100?
They, they said if that's, if the sidewalk on the south side was subtracted from the bridge section, you're, you're looking at a total construction savings of around 250 something thousand dollars. That is the total construction cost, so you've got to think about, our portion of that is 20%. So that comes, our portion of savings would be around 45K.
Okay.
To not have.
And where.
To, to delete that sidewalk off the south side.
Right. And where would that decision, where, where does that sit in the timeline? Where, where do we make that determination about, we'd like to save that $45,000 and eliminate the, the walking?
You can make that after we get you a spreadsheet with some concrete numbers and you know, we, we've paid them quite a bit on this design that includes that portion, so we would have to have them remove that. I'd have to ask them how much it's going to cost for them to redesign that without the walkway, and how much is that going to save us on the 40, you know, if their redesign costs 15 grand towards the 45, it's going to cost us if we're in, it may be better just to go ahead and, but I can try to give you those numbers.
And wouldn't eliminating a pedestrian walkway adversely affect our ability to be successful in the TAP application?
It's possible. They, they also said, as far as the plan view of how much concrete you're actually able to delete from the bridge section is, it's, it's, it's not the same as just saying we can chop off all that sidewalk and we lose, you know, that, that entire section. Rather, what, what has to be provided is a pretty significant shoulder of four feet outside of the white line. And so you do delete a few feet of concrete, but not, not as much as just totally, totally hatching that whole thing off the plan, basically, because we, we would end up with a, a shoulder of four feet.
So shoulder and, and walkway, that's 10 feet, we can only take off five, we have to keep the shoulder, so you're only really saving a small amount of concrete with.
I know this is up to the council, but when I spoke to the mayor, he, he thought the 45 grand savings was quite small, and perhaps it's, I mean, it's not bad if we brought, checked into it, but perhaps we just poured it ahead the way it was.
That's great. 45,000 is 45,000.
Yeah.
Don't tell me whether it's big or small, it was 45,000.
Yeah, and one thing you have to look at is sidewalk on the south side that runs from the drugstore across the bridge. If you do away with that, then you've got crosswalks, people in wheelchairs crossing six lanes, two four of road and two of Greenway to get to the other side instead of just, you know, crossing the south side to get over to the hospital or whatever else they're going to.
I can just see somebody wheeling a wheelchair across the bridge.
I guess, to, to the point, though, that there's going to be pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, that there would be crosswalks on the north side or on the west side and the east side?
Correct.
No matter whether there's a walking, separate walking lane or not, right?
That's correct, but I believe Derek correctly come wrong, the crosswalk's going to be closer to the stoplight, so they're going to redo. If you're, if you're coming west on Mercy Way, that little hook out the way people get onto 71 causes a lot of accidents, and they're going to eliminate that. So you'll actually come to the stoplight, put your blinker on, and make a hard right. And I think that's. And I think the crosswalk would actually be in there. So they would cross there, and then they wouldn't have to cross that little spur, because that would go away. There would be a sidewalk by the gas station. I think that's what we're drawing, actually.
Probably a formal right turn, if you will.
Correct. So coming off the bridge, so this is going to go all the way to the street east, Lambeth?
That's correct.
So on this design, will that sidewalk continue all the way to Lambeth off of the bridge, above the south side? But if you would eliminate, well, I guess the sidewalk, but is it going to be there anyway, regardless of whether you have the walkway or not? You know what I mean?
There's some already there, but when you ask me about that, it's minimal, the charge for that.
Okay. I'm not suggesting to do away with it, I'm just trying to picture what it looks like.
We could definitely provide some additions if it's.
Do you have, in your 50% plan, do you have a layout that shows the plan view of the bridge and all that kind of other stuff?
Would you?
Maybe it would be helpful to include that in your packet, to kind of show us what's happening.
Was it in what you provided last? We looked at it, we looked at that drawing.
Oh, yeah.
The other day, it's in there, right? It's not a visual of it.
It's just an overview, it's not an aerial photo with the entire layout of the project.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead? I thought the next item we might cover would be the Sunset Drive update, and then we could have the police building review last. So Sunset Drive.
Sunset Drive, they've been hard at it now for almost a month, since we looked at the stop work. I sent you a link today to a bunch of photographs showing some of the lower retaining wall, the back portion of the building, that they're building right now. They're going to need to complete that before they start the backfill, up to the second level retaining wall, additional backfill up to the street level. And an email that I got from him after I sent that to you, Wayne, was that they're expecting the street construction to begin mid-July. So they got two levels of retaining wall, two levels of backfill, but they've made a lot of progress in the last three weeks. And I think they're going to have to make it a little safer. The guardrails before were not in the asphalt, and we've asked them to put those in asphalt because the site's just not as stable as it was prior to what happened. Plus, you've got a building below now that a truck did.
How much room is between the building and the actual road when it's finished? You have the guardrail, and you've got the building like right there.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's.
It'd be pretty close, doesn't it?
It's a little further than you'd think. It's not 10 or 12 feet, I mean, it's 30, 40, 50.
I wouldn't jump that far.
Okay, I think we're ready now. We're going to have a special presentation on the proposed new police and courts building.
Sure. So maybe I give you a little bit of what we've done to get this needs assessment up, and then I'd love to take some questions if you have. My whole intent today is to kind of get a conversation going so everybody can get the information they need to help make a decision in the future. As you know, we started last year with a needs assessment, we worked with Height Jackson, I have a couple of folks here, Gail and Randall here from Height Jackson, helped us do this needs assessment. Some of you already know this, but some are newer to the council. A lot of things we're taking into account was sort of building 30 years out, and that's sort of standard practice now, is to build 30 years out, thinking about, you know, designing a building that we're not going to outgrow immediately, designing a building we can grow into, so that folks can take your place, folks can take my place, they don't have to redo this. Especially important in Bella Vista, being that flat land is very hard to come by, so once we put a building there, we'd really like to be a building that's going to really last into the future, so people don't have to redo this because we're not going to have more flat land. So that's kind of what we took into account. So I tried to look at where we thought the population might be in 30 years, that's difficult to do, though. You know, we sort of extrapolated, you know, 200 or so on average, new home builds every year, you take that into the future. I did a lowball, and I said, you know, maybe three people per house, your average family's more likely four. We're getting younger demographics now. And I came up with in 30 years, anywhere from 55 to 60,000 as a population, I think that's pretty fair, I don't know, but that's kind of what we came up with. When I look at a police department, how big does our police department have to be to match that? We look at numbers like, what's the national average for officers per thousand? Of course, Bella Vista, we don't have standard police in like a lot of big cities, I don't think we will, at least into the near future, so I think we can be on the low side of how many officers per thousand, and I'm comfortable with that. Right now, we're barely an officer per thousand, maybe a little less right now, and we're probably, we need to be a little larger right now as we stand, but not by much. So you look at officer per thousand, the average is anywhere from 1.6 to two officers per thousand across the country. Of course, bigger urban cities, you always have a more dense, a larger police force. Again, we don't need that. I think a comfortable number for us into the future is maybe something like 1.4 officers per thousand. So when I look at that, I look at a police force in 30 years, a commissioned force of about 75, 76. Right now, we have a commissioned force of 34. And your civilian support is usually about 30%, or so of your commissioned support. So then we're looking at an overall police department of 30 years of maybe 100 people. Okay, that's, that would be your commissioned about 70, 77, 78, the rest would be your civilian support staff. And so when I look at those numbers, and then we look at the department, really what we have here is we have a building, right now, we're in a building of about 7,000 square feet between the two floors, okay? Plus or minus, I think 100, I think it's maybe 70, 100 square feet, but there are about 7,000 square feet between the two floors. And everybody knows here that was never designed to be a police department, so it has a lot of issues and problems that really a modern police department needs to remedy. So as our force stands right now, we probably need a building with our current personnel, probably about 14,000 square foot building or 15,000 square foot building, okay? Would be what we need right now to survive adequately with what we have. Now, how do you come up with that number as far as how big an apartment? Again, I looked at a lot of studies about size of building per how many officers, or how large a staff is. And a number that most people are using is about 250 feet per officer, 250 square feet per officer. What they found is, this one organization went out and talked to a bunch of chiefs throughout the country, small departments, large departments, and they asked them, they kind of extrapolated through interviews, when chiefs had a building that was based on how many people they had, you had less than 250 square feet per officer or per staff number. Complaints were a lot more, morale was a lot lower, and there were a lot more issues and problems with staff. As you went north of 250 feet, square feet per person, complaints were reduced, the work environment was much more productive. And so that's just sort of what they found, that's how I came up with 250 feet per officer or per person minimum, okay? So if you ask them, where'd you find that number? It was just through a lot of research online and finding some of these studies, and that's just sort of the number that you came up with. Of course, there's other factors that go into morale and work department, but that was just a number. So when we look at that, we come up, we designed this building, came up with a building, when you pull out the court facility, of about 36,000 square feet, okay? And that gives us some things we don't have nowadays, which is some training rooms, which we don't have right now, we have to use a fire training room, we don't have a training room, it gives us adequate office space. It gives us a firing range, which is something that a modern police department, really, if they can have it, should, especially in Bella Vista, when we go out to shoot, we have to borrow the P O A range to do that, we don't have the ability to go out and qualify without borrowing some necessary range. So that's kind of how we came up with the numbers, as far as the size of the building and how we arrived at that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody's had time to go through the plan and kind of dig down and drill down, if you want, at least get started on that now.
So in the proposed plan, the size of the building is based on what you think would be needed in 2050?
Yeah, so how it works is, so when I say the building's built for 30 years, that means we move, when it's built, you move in, of course, it looks large, everybody's like, wow, what are you doing in all this space, okay? The idea is that in 30 years, the department will fit that building and won't start outgrowing it for 30 years, okay? From that point, they start outgrowing the building, start rearranging, start doing what police departments always do and make do with what they have. There are even some shell space that was designed in this building, which is this portion right up here, okay? There's nothing up here except just a big open shell space, okay? And that was designed to give, again, the department and the future council members and the chief and whomever, an option to grow in the future when they outgrow the building, so they don't have to blow out a wall or change the footprint at all. They can go, well, we have this large shell space here, so let's open this up, and now let's spend some money to design it and have more office space. So that shell space was put in there for that reason, for even additional growth into the future, so you don't have to start taking walls down. Okay? The shell space, if you look at the packet, you know, it has it in there with the current price, and if that's something that money wanted to be saved, I think it saved, I don't have, in front of me was a couple hundred thousand dollars?
It was $200,000.
Okay. Now, when I say shell space, it's minimal, it's unfinished, it has minimal mechanical, like cooling and heating going to it, just to keep it from freezing and getting too hot. There's an entry door to get to it, just to get in there to make sure rats and hornets and stuff haven't taken over. Besides that, it's just open, a big open space.
I had a question. This would be more for your architects, I guess. You know, I'm familiar with a concept in construction where people will build a building, and they'll say, we built this in a way where it could be added on to, readily added on to. So they wouldn't, for, in this case, they wouldn't build the 35, 37,000 square feet, but they build it in a way that it's designed, you know, in a way that you could add on, and there's a clear way you'd add on when you grew and got bigger.
Sure, and I'll let them ask that in a sec. Real quick, though, a lot of things we take into consideration is flow, right? The way things flow in the building, and a lot of times, it's difficult to add a lot of space on later on and make it still flow well, okay? But Gail or.
If you guys just talked about the price of the bridge, if you do it now and it's there for later, it's going to be cheaper now than where you get it later.
That's what I was going to say.
And it would be.
Yeah, if we go and do it now, and you can occupy that space, then it's going to be a lot cheaper to just take care of. We can, and we have kind of talked about where, how you would expand this building past that 30 years, but that's a discussion that we were thinking beyond the 30, and not for this initial. Because it's really difficult typically to have that amount of money to do it once, and then you're turning around in 15 years needing to do it again, instead of waiting a 30 to do it, you know? If you only do what you, just what you need, or just a little bit more than what you need.
Yeah. I assume that there's, when you build a bigger building, there's a certain economy to scale and the cost per square foot.
Yes. Yeah, and that was all factored into.
Right. For instance, a $35,000 square foot building would cost less per square foot than a 25,000 square foot.
If we took a third of your square footage out, your cost would not go down by 30.
Yeah.
What are two things that you could do to this layout and proposal here that would reduce the cost, not compromise the operational functionality or efficiency of the building, and would not compromise the long-term viability of the structure?
I'd like to say that we've already done all that. I'm trying to think of.
I'm looking at a couple of things on here, and I'm not picking on it, it was an architectural quid.
Yeah.
We're not building for architecture, we don't have the fluidity of funding in the city to do that. So my concern is that anything that adds to the cost but doesn't add to the functionality is not beneficial to us. One is the overhang in the front, it looks nice. Another thing is the overhang in the back, which is not functional, in that it doesn't provide any shading for the windows, it's an architectural extrusion hanging over, the rough lining across the back.
They both would provide some shade, and that's part of what they were there for, but what we did for a majority of the building, it is an extremely straightforward, simple building, with just that entry piece, it's just a little bit nicer to give it a sense of.
The other thing, all of the glasswork is there?
Yeah.
That's an energy loss in an empty day. Energy loss in cold weather, energy gain in the warm weather. And so, and that's a cost also, in terms of the structure, I think, that you're not gaining from, other than it looks nice.
Well, some of that, some of those windows are also for security, so they can be, so they have an understanding of what's happening outside.
I'm not disputing the fact we need windows, I'm only saying the size and the aerial expansive, just as a comment.
So when we designed the building, and they came up with several different designs that we sort of looked at, really what we were looking for, and we worked with the mayor a little bit on this to get his input, is we know that eventually, whatever we do, we have to go out to the public with. And so we want it to be a building the public's going to look at, and they're going to go, I mean, yeah, we could design a box, a Walmart store kind of box, which is more efficient, it's square, everything fits in there, but we wanted it to be appealing to the public as well, so we're kind of trying to, you know, and the windows, I don't disagree with you, there's, though they do provide some lighting and maybe some reduced energy costs in the daytime because of the natural lighting. I also look at employees, and really, when I get employees actual, some natural lighting, there are some work product that actually, there's some happy employees that might, you know, that do better when they have it.
And I'm in agreement with you on those factors. The only point is, is it looks like there's a lot of glass in the back.
Sure.
And maybe half of that glass would provide the same benefit at less cost.
Yeah.
And better energy efficiency.
And that'd be definitely, and like I say, this is sort of a first blush, and definitely those are things that we could take into account later on down the road. You know, sometimes windows, I mean, while I do like some windows, like the bottom windows I had designed narrower, because initially, the initial design, these windows here were a lot.
On that lower level.
On the lower level, were a lot bigger, and that, security-wise, I didn't like that, because I didn't, so we kind of narrowed them, set them back within a sort of a window sill to kind of give a little more security. So we did take some windows into consideration as far as security, but no, I'm all, you know, those suggestions are great, and those are the things we're looking for as we move forward in the project, to see how we can make it better, and yeah, save costs, because I agree, if you could save a little bit here and there, it does make a difference.
And what's included in the building now to promote reduced operating costs for heating and cooling?
Well, this is an extremely early, early design, there's not actually a mechanical system designed.
Conceptually.
But conceptually, it's going to be a high-efficiency system. I don't remember specifically what they were. We did get input from our mechanical engineers, and I apologize, I don't remember the specific system that they were using, but per code, we have to be pretty, pretty energy efficient. And then we can work through with the police department after, after the fact, when we have more time and we're really able to focus on that, we can do any number of things.
We looked at a lot of their designs and buildings that they've involved in, there's a LEED title, called LEED, which is, you're familiar with that, we're not going to go to LEED efficiency only, well, we're not going to try to achieve LEED standards in the sense of getting a LEED certification, because it's just, a lot of times, more expensive to get certifications, it's really worth, but a lot of their design, what they do are up to LEED standards, and so the building will meet a lot of the LEED standards, we just won't go out and get those certifications, because you have to jump through so many hoops to do so, and it's really a lot of times not worth that.
One of the, I can tell you that we did Fayetteville High School, and when we did the Phase 1 of Fayetteville High School, they asked us to do LEED equivalent, but not actually do LEED because of that specifically. We have four or five people in our office right now that are LEED, that are LEED architects. We went all the way through that, at the very end, we were at 90... At the very end, we were at 90, 90 to 95% construction documents and they asked us to, they changed their mind and wanted to go ahead forward with the LEED certification. And we were able to get them silver, which is a, is one step above. We didn't just get them the basic LEED. We were able to get them the second level just because of that. So we're fully capable and that's something that we're comfortable doing, is just trying to reach those, reach for those things without having to worry about going through LEED.
In terms of the rate of return, what does that do for us as your client to have a LEED certification? Does it save us money?
No. Well, now, no. Actually, having a LEED certification does not. If we're designing you an efficient system that would get you a LEED certification, yes, because you will get, you will get lower utility bills and all that and it will save you money. But going after the certification is merely to have a plaque on the wall that said that you cared enough to do that.
Could you mention some of the LEED-related buildings you've done? I know you've done some work in this area.
Right now, we have, we did, quite a few years ago, we did Rogers, and Rogers Station that they're working out of now. But we just recently, we're completing the Arkansas State Police Project. And we are also on the team that the construction documents just are out to bid right now for the Springdale, Springdale Police and Courts Building that's also got the administration building attached. So the police have a three-story piece of that building. And we are, we are architects, that's a teaming. So we're not the sole architect on that, but we were on the Arkansas State Police Project. No, I guess that was, we had somebody that was early on on that, but then.
Where is that located?
In Lowell. Yeah. If you're heading out, you get off and head towards the airport.
How long ago was the locker facility?
That was late 90s. It's been a while, but it was Police and Courts and, as well. But it was, I was, I was not on that project. I was there. But I was working on something else, yes, I was. Huh? No, thank you very much, but no. I was fully out of college. But it was mid to late 90s. So, and we still have the architect on staff that was the, that ran that project.
They've pretty much filled it up. I don't.
Yeah, they're doing it.
And it was cavernous when they built it.
Oh, when they built Bentonville, the same way we went down and looked at it. You had to go look for people, I mean, they almost needed a map.
Yeah.
And now it's full and they're building another one behind it.
Yeah, so I've been involved in building some police, back in Tucson, we did some stations back there when I was on the department. And I know one specifically we built. And I remember the day we moved in, I was a young officer, the day we moved in, we were out of locker spaces. So, so I have a little, little experience in not sort of planning for the future. Because I remember they built that building, we moved in, and I mean, they had to immediately go in there and split the lockers and start redesigning things because they, you know, they just weren't forward-thinking like that. So, so that's, that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here, trying to avoid that. Also, I want, one of the things I'm considering as we're looking at this building is I want to design a building because I won't, I won't be here forever. You guys won't be here forever, my staff won't be here forever. We're always going to be competing with Bentonville's, Fayetteville's, Rogers. They'll always bill pay a little more than us. That's just the way it is, though we pay pretty good. So what we need, we're, we're competing for the professionals in the business and to draw them in, a lot of it is amenities. You know, what, you know, what, what does our department look like when you walk through the door? What sort of, what, what sort of image are we presenting? And, and so that's kind of what I'm thinking about in the future as well, is, is how do we draw, continue to draw professionals? Because really, in the police industry, the pools get pretty, pretty thin as far as drawing, drawing new professional folks in. And so that's kind of what I'm thinking about too in the future because we're going to continue to compete with Fayetteville and Bentonville and Rogers and these other cities around us that are growing up around us with, with, with large tax basins. And so, and so we just need to think of different ways to draw professional people into the city.
And remember, we fired 18 people in 10 years.
Yep.
That's lots of folks.
It is.
That building was tight when I left it. We had room for a handful, we didn't have room for 18. And we couldn't do anything. You turn around and you're busting butts with somebody trying to get in his locker.
I liked the initial rendering personally. And I think of where it's going to be, you have the fire department out there, the new, you have the new streets department. And I think it, you know, structures like this are a point of personal pride, I think, for the residents, the community, and it gets new, refreshing. I, I like it. I think so. And again, it's just a rendering and we're in infancy stage and it's just kind of, interestingly enough, just so council knows, you know, I started early on in this, when I first got here, I went to the same school that Councilmember Wozniak went to.
Art and Dick.
Yeah, I went up there to police facility research design, went to a school up there to learn a little bit about how to do this before we even got going. And the gentleman who runs that company kind of did a swag for me, you know, based on our population and things like that and what a department, a police department, 30 years in the future might cost us and believe it, might cost. And believe it or not, he came up with 11 to 12 million dollars. And so, and so when we came up, and I never told the Hyde Jackson that, so when they came back with that number, I thought, well, okay, that's, that's pretty ballpark. That's pretty solid industry-wise because we're dealing with two different entities. And so, so I was pretty comfortable with the number. It's a high number, so don't get me wrong, it's a lot of money, but I was pretty comfortable. That was a pretty good industry standard for what we were actually looking for. And actually, they've done a little better because the one heat, the swag he gave me did not include an actual four-lane gun range underneath in the basement. So, so Hyde Jackson's actually done a little better with their numbers. So I'd be happy, you know, to, to answer more questions or you folks can digest this. I'd be happy to take meetings with anyone, you know, either any questions later on or come back and, you know, we could do this again. But I just thought it was important to at least start, start having a conversation because things aren't going to get cheaper as time goes on and, and our needs aren't going to get less because we're going to continue to need to, to grow, so go slowly. I don't want to grow fast as a department because I want to build, us to build to support it. But we do have additional needs as, as we move forward. And Councilmember Flynn came through the department today and sort of showed, I sort of showed him how, you know, we have old closets that are now offices and, and Councilmember Wozniak probably remembers that. So we've made a very good use of all the space we have, but really there was just zero space remaining.
I have seen that firsthand myself. And I, I think our police department is such an essential component of this community and largely responsible for the fact that we are one of the safest cities in the state, if not the country. And we never want to take that for granted. I, I think, as I wrap my mind around this, I think it's, it's absolutely necessary that we provide better facilities for our police department than what we are able to provide today. So there's no doubt in my mind that we need a new facility. And I think the thing that I want to wrap my mind around a little bit is kind of this growth rate that you've, you've built into this, that 30 years from now, we may be a community of 100,000 people and therefore needing 100 officers to go. I don't want that to become the issue in some kind of agenda where we might be asking the community to support additional funding for this facility. I don't want it to become an issue of, I don't want a community of 100,000 people in 30 years and therefore I'm not going to start voting for it now. So I think that projection of size, I think that's something that we've got to be careful about.
And I, I think I, about 55,000, I think, is where, where we're going to be at.
Okay, well, I, I thought.
We went 100 officers.
100 officers, and I thought it was one per thousand.
1.4, 1.4, he said.
It's about 1.4 per thousand.
Okay.
And I think at 55,000 folks, that gets me at about.
I think you said 74.
Yeah, 77 officers with 23 civilian staff. So, so yeah, at 55,000 population, 1.4 officers per thousand, plus you added the civilian staff after that, gets you a, a staff of 100.
Okay.
With a sworn department of 77.
Okay.
Which is pretty comparable to what we have now based on the population we have now. So.
Same ratios.
When I did all these numbers, it was really, what I, what I found is really they somewhat, they worked. The math worked as we got bigger and the size of the department got to where I estimated it. It worked pretty well with the current math and where we currently should be now. So, so now the population, I don't think will be 100,000 in 30 years. God, I hope not.
Right.
But, but I think, I think 50,000 is really safe to say, maybe 55.
Well, there have been projections that have been done, maybe outside of yours. That's what it says.
Yeah.
Is 50. You know, straight line math isn't going to work, but we had 262 new residential units last year and we're on a pretty heavy pace again this year. We had 200 the year before. If you do your four per family, that's basically in addition to 31,000 people.
Yeah, yeah.
Over that time, so that's 61,000 people. And you know, too, if you start putting numbers out there, I mean, we're not projecting, you know, we're not trying to drive growth out here. I mean, if.
I'm just trying to plan.
People that come, I mean, they're, they're coming and we're a very attractive community. And you're going to have ebbs and flow over the next 30 years, but we could very easily be at 50. We have a lot to offer out here, so.
Yes, sir.
We have roughly 38,000-plus lots that have been planted by Cooper. That's not counting vacant land that they own that's developable potentially. So if you just use a factor of two, that's 76,000 at full buildout. Use a factor of three per dwelling, that would be about 95,000. So that's our, our full buildout of Bellevista would be in that 76 to 95,000 range, assuming we don't have any other developments created in the vacant lands that exist here.
Well, I got bad news, my department's too small then.
I mean, that's, that's, that's ultimate buildout.
Right.
You know, let's be realistic. You're not going to build on them 38,000, 38,000 lots.
No, you're not.
And how many folks have more than one lot?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a point when I mean.
I mean, that's, you're, you're looking at maybe 20, 25,000 lots eventually because of some of them how they are, straight up and straight down. So, you know, 38,000 is nice to keep the place running, get 16 bucks a month, but that's not going to happen. And that's realistically, just stop and think. You can't put a house on every freaking lot that's out here. You just think it'll happen. And then there's folks who have more than one lot. So if you keep it at 20 or 25,000 lots, you'll be in the ballpark.
Yeah. Drawing out the numbers, setting it there.
And so what would that, what would that population be if we did?
Well, if you went 2.4 or 3.4, you know, to be around 75 is, if that would happen. But at the 55 is much more realistic.
Well, see, even if you had 262 houses a year, for the next 30 years, that's 6,800 lots.
Over what you have now, which is about 14.
And that would still be under 20,000 lots releasing. So I would say, looking at this building, if, you know, I estimate a growth on the low side and let's say the growth is on the higher side. I mean, this building does allow with that shell space for, for, for the growth. And so that is built into the building. And what would happen is you would just, you would just outgrow the building quicker than, than needed. And we did discuss, you know, we did design, or the bottom floors, the ends were designed to where you could bring out the walls in the bottom. Let's say you filled the shell space up, let's say Bellevista boomed and it's like, oh my gosh. I mean, you could take out some of those side walls on either end. We did design it like that.
And lengthened the corner.
Yeah, if you had to. I mean, so, so there is that additional room. I don't think, hopefully you wouldn't have to, but I mean, that was all taken into account when, when, when the design was put together. So, so that is there.
That was kind of the nature of my questioning, not that I'm, not that I'm against anything that's being proposed here, but that was the concept that I was looking at, is that that ability to, the flexibility in the design to expand should the need be there. And then the question is, can we build a little less with that capacity for expansion?
Sure.
To lower our front-end costs, because that's my big concern, even at 11 to 12 million.
Can, I would, I would, I would really caution against changing this initial design. I think if you, you'd have, you'd have to do a lot of redesigning because, because of the way it flows right now. I would try to cut some costs and save some costs elsewhere, or I'd just, I'd really recommend, look, if this is something that's cost prohibitive right now, then it's something maybe that should be readdressed at a later time. But I think if you start chopping up this design or, or to shrink it, because we've talked about that. Really, the only, only way, let's say to, we want to save money, make the building smaller. Really, the only way to do that and make it still function is to go into each room and shave off square footage. Okay. Is really the only way to make that work.
Say that, I'm sorry.
To go into each room and shave off square footage.
Right, because what I was trying, what we were just, I was whispering over here is, I think we probably laid this floor plan out somewhere between 12 to 15 times and maybe 10, 12, 15 times to make sure, just iterations. Because we'd lay one out and we'd have a discussion and we'd find something that needs to be adjusted so that the, the, everybody's, because also we're working with the courts and the police trying to overlap things that need to be overlapped and spaces that need to be kept apart. And so it, it's not just a simple, oh, well, we put you here and you here and boom, we're good. We, we did work quite thoroughly through. That's not to say that when we're ready to move forward, we probably will need to revisit everything and make sure it's still there. But it's not as easy as just, well, that 10 or 20 foot, we'll just lock that off and, and put it on later because it won't be. They will not have an efficient building that will carry them into that 30 years that way.
Is the plan, you go, I understand it's very preliminary, but it is important to keep the court and the police separate. So you would go and saw a door and maybe left to the court, right to the police? Is that kind of how it would work or are there separate entry doors for court and police?
Um, no, there's one door. You don't really, we're actually in Springdale consolidating because they've got three doors and it's very confusing. We're consolidating there. So this is, you walk in one door, but it's very apparent you're in one lobby. You move forward to talk to the police department and you've got to the side to get to the court. And you just make that very obvious when you.
Now, the court staff does have their own interests.
Yes.
And the judge needs to come in.
As an employee, they go, right?
Yeah, and they know where they're going. But we had to be very careful about how to move prisoners through the building and get them to the court without being in a place that they shouldn't be, that's not secure. Because in the police station, it makes sense, but it was difficult to make sure that we had a secure corridor all the way to the police, to the, to court's facility as well. So I think we've managed most of that.
Thank you for your work on this. Thanks for your time with you.
Thank you.
So I think that's it for tonight. No one else have questions? We're adjourned.